Is the mayor of the city of Stanton, I call the work session meeting of September 9th, 2021, Thursday, 6:30 to order. In the first order of business, I'll entertain a motion to approve the acting clerk of council.
Madam Mayor.
Counselor Claffey.
I move that Morgan Smith, the appointed as acting clerk of council for the recordation of proceedings at council at its work session and regular meeting of September 9th, 2021, and that she be authorized and directed to sign and execute such documents as are necessary and proper regarding the presence of council members, a quorum, consideration, and voting.
All right, thank you. We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
I will second that.
We have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Who shall, Mr. Blair, who shall call the roll?
Ah, Ms. Smith.
Is that okay?
That is okay.
Okay. All right, Ms. Smith, please call the roll.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Right, the next item. On September 8th, 2021, I received a request from Counselor Dole to participate remotely in the September 9th, 2021 Stanton City Council meeting due to a family member's medical condition and prevents her physical attendance at the meeting. I will now entertain a motion to allow Counselor Dole's remote participation in this meeting pursuant to Stanton City Council procedural memorandum number three.
Mayor Oaks.
Counselor Darby.
Pursuant to Stanton City Council procedure memorandum number three, I move to allow Counselor Dole to remotely participate in the September 9th, 2021 Stanton City Council meeting due to a temporary medical condition.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Madam Mayor, I second that.
All right, Counselor Claffey has second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Smith, please call the roll.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Counselor Dole, can you please state the remote location from which you are participating?
1,003 East Beverly Street, Stanton.
All right, thank you. Can everyone on council and in the audience hear Counselor Dole?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, welcome. Thank you. All right, so, next item is on September 8th, 2021. I received a request from Counselor Mead to participate remotely in the September 9th, 2021 Stanton City Council meeting due to a medical condition that prevents her physical attendance at the meeting. I will now entertain a motion to allow Counselor Mead's remote participation in this meeting pursuant to Stanton City Council procedural memorandum number three.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Move pursuant to Stanton City Council procedural memorandum number three, I move to allow Counselor Mead to remotely participate in the September 9th, 2021 Stanton City Council meeting due to a temporary medical condition.
All right, thank you. We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Madam Mayor.
Counselor Claffey?
Second that.
We have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Smith, please call the roll.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Dole.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. Counselor Mead, can you please state the remote location from which you are participating?
I think I have a text from Ms. Mead, and it seems, she's saying she hasn't been able to be admitted into the meeting, but we don't have, that's not how this one works, so I'm not sure where she is.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
This is Carolyn Dole. Ms. Mead is listed under attendees, not under panelists.
Um, is she, ah, okay. Ms. Mead, if you can hear me, if you could try clicking the link that I sent you in the email, and not the one from the website. It's the same link that I sent to Ms. Dole. Currently, I'm allowing Ms. Mead to talk. Ms. Mead, can you hear us?
I can hear you now.
I just, um, did you click on the link from my email?
I did.
Okay. It's the same link I sent to Ms. Dole. I have her on as an attendee right now, so she can listen to us.
Thank you. Counselor Mead, can you please state the remote location from which you are participating?
342 Sherwood Avenue, Stanton.
Thank you. Can everyone on council, as well as the audience here, Counselor Mead?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Rosenberg.
We can try to resolve this before we move forward. Ms. Smith, is there a way for you to invite Ms. Mead to show her video as an attendee?
It doesn't look like that is an option. Well, yes, yes, there is. All right, she should show up shortly as, here we go. Thank you, Steve, Mr. Rosenberg.
Are we all good?
Here we go.
One second.
Here we go.
There we go.
Okay, there you are.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, the first item on the agenda for the work session is a consideration of work session and regular meeting agendas. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Counselor Claffey?
I move to approve the agenda for tonight's work session and regular meetings with one note. Effective next meeting, I move to have the roll call portion of the agenda moved from regular session to the work session for an efficiency sake, so that if possible, the items can be addressed during the meeting instead of awaiting two weeks.
All right, um, so we have a motion on the floor to approve the work session and regular meeting agenda, but to also move the roll call to the work session agenda rather than the regular meeting agenda. Effective.
Next meeting.
That will be effective for the next meeting, not tonight's meeting.
I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
So we have a second by the Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Robertson. However, the motion does indicate that the work session and regular meeting agendas are being approved for tonight. So, any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Smith, please call the roll.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Dole.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Mr. Rosenberg, if you can just adjust the work session agenda for the next meeting.
We will do so.
Thank you. All right, the next item is a discussion of resolution establishing the percentage of relief at 32% for purposes of the Personal Property Tax Relief Act. Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to welcome Commissioner of the Revenue Maggie Reagan, who will present this item to council.
Welcome, Commissioner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Each September, I come before you to request an approval of recommended percentage of personal property tax relief to apply to our motor vehicles in the city. Due to the General Assembly action back in 2004, the amount of personal property tax relief that is directed from the state to the city of Stanton, that amount, the amount of 1,650, $2,200 was capped at that point. That is the amount that we receive each and every year to distribute across the fleet of vehicles that we have in the city. And through my calculations, I am recommending this year that in order to process an equitable transmission of those funds to our city residents for their personal property, that rate would be set at 32% for this year. The, are there any questions in terms of the rate or the amount?
Are there any questions?
That are recommended? Sure.
Maggie, isn't it, I remember back years ago, it was like 25% or whatever, but...
It started out at 70%.
Okay.
And it is down to, so we have steadily declined. So essentially, as the value of the entire fleet increases, the percentage of relief that the state capped in 2004 will continue to decline.
Number of vehicles rise in the city than they...
And value of those vehicles.
Right.
So, what, you know, we all know what we bought a car for in 2004 is not what we bought a car for today. So that's, that's really the biggest piece of it. We are recommending the 32%, similar to the same as Augusta County, is, that's their percentage that they're recommending for this year as well. There are numbers across the board depending on the size of locality and the turnover of vehicles in different localities. Due to the fact that we are non-pro rating localities, we have, we have a tendency to have a little bit higher percentage than some of the very large localities that have a lot of transient populations. I'm aware of at least two localities that are already down into the single digits as far as their percentage is concerned.
Mr. Claffey?
Is there, all right, so, any vehicle that's valued at less than $1,000 is taxed, I mean, is not taxed at all?
Is completely relieved.
Is there any move to raise that threshold, you know, to $2,000 since the value of cars has gone up so much?
That, that would be a General Assembly action.
We can't do any of that.
That's correct.
For us, for these tax purposes.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions on, go ahead. Prior, prior to, but I just would like to share some information with you. We expect there to be an increase in personal property taxes this year. So I just wanted to give you some background on, sort of on where we stand as far as that's concerned. Our association, professional association, has worked very closely with J.D. Power Associates, who we contract with to provide the vehicle assessments, and they've provided some information to us that I'd like to share with you this evening, if I could. There are several factors that are attributing to, attributed to the COVID-19 pandemic that have resulted in motor vehicle valuations rising between 2020 and 2021, and we expect to have some higher assessments for our taxpayers as a result. We'll all end up hearing about that, so that's why I wanted to share this information with you. So I'm going to pull this, I'm having a hard time. Thank you. In the spring of 2020, many automakers shut down and redirected their manufacturing efforts to produce ventilators and other necessary durable medical equipment. Number two, the Federal Reserve cut interest rates to historic lows, making low-interest car loans readily available to qualified buyers. Next, large fleet companies such as rental agencies and car services held on to a lot of their fleet rather than releasing them back into the used market like they normally do on an annual cycle because they weren't able to buy new units. In late 2020, the government stimulus funds began flowing and gave many buyers down payments on vehicles they might not have otherwise considered buying, and, and in fact, buying new vehicles that they may not have otherwise considered buying. Wholesale prices increased between, from 2020 to 2021. So I have a document, I'm just going to pass around, this is proprietary information that was shared by J.D. Power, so I'm just going to pass it forward and ask you to pass it back to me, but it shows you three very typical vehicles and their average increase in their wholesale prices. So that document shows that the average wholesale, and this is, these are 2017 models because we're looking at, those are the, the highest increases are in late model used cars. And so they show that the average wholesale prices have gone up anywhere between 10% and 26% on vehicles, and these are just some examples of fairly popular vehicles. Prices on both new and used cars have risen, so that essentially gives people more equity in their vehicles, and so you see a lot of people that are trading upwards because they have the ability to get a better trade-in value for their vehicles. And there are more manufacturer shutdowns on the way. If you have read recently in the news, several automakers have shut down truck plants, microprocessors and other specific chips that are needed to produce new vehicles are very scarce right now, and they're competing, auto manufacturers are competing with other manufacturers for those chips, and they're just having a difficult time getting that flowing into the plant so that they can continue manufacturing. We have information that was shared with us that some of the automakers are suggesting that it may be fourth quarter of 2024 before inventory returns to pre-COVID levels.
Oh, wow.
So the average, 2024, so the average amount of vehicles that are on the market at any given time is generally around 3 million. Right now, it's less than one.
Correct.
So there's a lot of pressure on prices to rise because of that. So, we are expecting our taxpayers will see some increase in their property assessments this year, probably next year. For this year, what, what I'm seeing in our fleet, specifically in Stanton, is that large pickups, SUVs and specialty cars like Dodge Chargers, Challengers and Camaros and Mustangs are the ones who are seeing the largest increases. So if you're, if you're owning a sedan that's maybe six or seven years old, you're probably not going to see an increase. But if you've bought something that's, you know, a 2017 or later model, probably going to see an increase more so on, on the truck end, basically, large vehicles. So I just want to share that information. I usually share some fun and interesting information with you.
I know.
But, and I apologize for not having that. As you are probably well aware, we are in the middle of a software transition, so I don't have access to the data today. But I can tell you that the number of vehicles in our fleet that are valued over $20,000 increased by 600 units from last year to this year. So that's people buying more expensive cars. And we are seeing some leveling off of ownership of sedans. You all may be aware that Ford has completely stopped making sedans altogether, and that's really the trend. And there are several other automakers that we expect probably to follow suit in the next couple of years. So as we move into more trucks and more SUVs, again, the value of our fleet rises. So that's probably not the most positive information to share with you this evening, but I feel like you should be prepared and understand how it's going to affect our taxpayers moving forward.
Well, as far as the taxes, we can blame COVID.
Well, you know, so many things have, have come as a result that were things that we just couldn't see around the corner and expect to happen.
Exactly.
And so, you know, this is just kind of added to the list. Ms. Darby, you had a question?
Yes, I think you said this, but I want to make sure I heard you correctly, that the increase, you believe that will be the same for our neighbors in Augusta County as well?
The valuation increases are across the board. So there are three values that are provided by J.D. Power to all commissioners of revenue across the state of Virginia. There's a trade-in value, a loan value, and a retail value, and we assess at that retail value and, and always have. And so localities, there are some localities who assess at different values, but the increases are the same across the Commonwealth. Yes.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Robertson, did you have a question?
Oh, no, no, I'm just, oh, okay.
All right, any other questions? Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
We appreciate the information.
You're welcome, and I will see you at the regular meeting.
All right, great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, this item will be item E at the regular meeting. The next item on the agenda is item three, a closed meeting for one, discussion of possible acquisition of real property within the city, and two, a discussion regarding the performance of a specific appointee of city council. I'll entertain a motion to go into closed meeting.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
I move that council enter a closed meeting for one, discussion of possible acquisition of real property for a public purpose located within the city limits of Stanton, Virginia, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the public body's bargaining position or negotiating strategy pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3711A3, and two, discussion regarding the performance of an appointee of city council, specifically the clerk of council pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3711A1.
All right, thank you. We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Mayor Oaks, I'll second that.
Counselor Darby, second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Smith, please call the roll.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Dole.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. We are now in closed session.
I hope we got you.
Okay.
Ladies and gentlemen, you're welcome to have a seat. The council was still in session during its work session.
I think we are still, I think we're good to go.
Good. Okay.
You ready?
Oh.
We don't have, we don't have Ms. Dole yet.
We should be good to go.
Or do you need to put it on regular volume?
Ms. Smith, I don't see Ms. Dole yet.
Okay. Let me see if she just...
There we go.
Thank you. I had to be a panelist.
Not sure what was going on with that.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to come out of closed meeting and go back into open session.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
I move that council reconvene in an open meeting and certify to the best of each member's knowledge that only lawfully exempted public business matters were discussed, and that only public business matters as identified in the closed meeting motion were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Mayor, I'll second that.
All right, Counselor Darby, second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Smith, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Dole.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. That brings us back into the work session, and I now call the work session adjourned. We will be back at 7:30 for the regular meeting. Hi, Morgan. As mayor of the city of Stanton, Virginia, I call the regular meeting of the Stanton City Council to order, 7:30 PM, Thursday, September 9th, 2021. The first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would like to join me, please do.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right, thank you. The next item is the invocation moment of silence, and tonight is Counselor Mead. Counselor Mead?
On September 10th, 20 years ago, 246 people went to sleep in preparation for their morning flights. 2,606 people went to sleep in preparation for work in the morning. 343 firefighters went to sleep in, excuse me, I'm sorry, give me a minute. 343 firefighters went to sleep in preparation for their morning shift. 60 police officers went to sleep in preparation for morning patrol. Eight paramedics went to sleep in preparation for the morning shift. None of them saw past 10:00 AM, September 11th, 2001. Many things changed in the aftermath of 9/11, but this country came together as, as we had not done for many years. We should remember that in one single moment, life may never be the same. So as you live and enjoy the breaths you take today and tonight before you go to sleep in preparation for your life tomorrow, kiss the ones, kiss the ones you love, and never take a second of your life for granted. Thank you.
Yes, indeed. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda. I appreciate that.
The next item is the mayor's report. I have a proclamation to read. It is Constitution City of Stanton, Virginia proclamation, Constitution Week, September 17th through the 23rd, 2021. Whereas, September 17th, 2021 marks the 234th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas, it is fitting and proper to officially recognize the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas, Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by Stanton City Council that September 17th through the 23rd, 2021 is hereby designated as Constitution Week. In the city of Stanton, and all the city's citizens are asked to reaffirm the ideals established by the framers of the Constitution in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, adopted this ninth day of September 2021, Andrew W. Oaks, Mayor. And it's my understanding we have Regent Cindy Phillips will receive for Augusta Parish chapter, Regent Dorothy Lee Rosen will receive for Beverly Manor, and Regent Helen Willard will receive for Colonel Thomas Hugert. All right. All right.
I got something, I don't know why.
Good evening, Mayor Oaks and Stanton City Council members. First of all, thank you for this opportunity to address you and to share information about Constitution Week. The designation of September 17 through the 23rd as Constitution Week had its origin 66 years ago. With the encouragement of the DAR members and the support of Senator Nolan, the resolution to designate this week became Public Law 915 on August 2, 1956. Part of the mission of the DAR is to promote patriotism, and this is why members of the Colonel Thomas Hugert Chapter and all DAR members seek out ways to publicize Constitution Week each year. In the past, this chapter has worked with only two schools in Stanton. However, we discovered that three other schools weren't being served during this week, so we're now providing all information to all five schools. Stanton High School and Shelburne Middle School were provided information about the poster contest, and we hope that Stanton will once again have a state, division, or national winner. Tonight, I'm honored to be here to accept this Constitution proclamation. All of the schools in Stanton will receive a copy of this proclamation as part of the instruction that the teachers will provide that week. Another component of Constitution Week is called Bells Across America. This is done on September 17 at 4:00 PM Eastern Standard Time. Citizens from around the country are encouraged to ring a bell to commemorate and celebrate the signing of the Constitution. I encourage the town to ring its bells, the fire trucks, the churches, and every principal in Stanton has been asked to do the same with their school bells. We wish to thank the town for flying the American flag during the downtown, in the downtown district during this week, and the businesses will receive a poster and information about Constitution Week. They will also get a copy of your proclamation. On behalf of the members of my DAR chapter and the other members of the chapters represented here, thank you for this opportunity to stand before you and share information about Constitution Week. May I approach your?
Yes, please.
I gave you posters last year. I don't know where they are. But if you would consider using this one and a copy of your proclamation posted.
Absolutely.
Thank you. You're all right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're all right.
Oh, I can still get you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I'd like to say welcome to everyone from the DAR. It's quite an honor to have all of you here today, and I promise you I was smiling under my mask.
I know. It's hard not to see all of you. Thank you so much for this.
Thank you, thank you. All right, the next item under the Mayor's Report, I would just like to state that it was my honor to attend the unveiling of the Bicycle Repair Station at Montgomery Hall Park. That's quite an exciting addition to Montgomery Hall Park. So if you find yourself in need of some air for your bicycle tires, we've got you covered. And I would like to thank the Rotary for partnering with the city on making this happen. All right, additional items by members of council?
Madam Mayor.
Counselor Claffey.
As a result of our closed meeting, we need to amend this evening's agenda. I move that we include item G at the end of the meeting, which is a resolution of the council of the City of Stanton authorizing the city manager to designate an acting clerk for the September 16, 2021 Planning Commission meeting.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson has seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Smith, please call the roll.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Ms. Doll.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. Are there any additional items by members of council?
Mayor Oaks, this is Brenda Mead.
Counselor Mead.
Thanks. So when you retire, you have some spare time on your hand, and I was doing a little research into the history of vaccinations in our country and found that George Washington was actually the first person to lead our country with mass vaccinations during the American Revolution. As the smallpox caused 90% of the deaths of American soldiers during the revolution, George Washington realized that if he was going to beat the British, and the British, by the way, had been vaccinated and inoculated against smallpox for many years, so they were not susceptible to the disease as American soldiers would be. Washington knew that if he did not inoculate his soldiers, we would lose the war, not because of British military expertise or the strength of their army. We would lose the war because we would die. So he imposed the first mass inoculation. And if you think about the population at that time, people who were, they could read and write, maybe. They were not educated people. They were farmers. They spent their days working in the fields, fishing, and seafaring and that sort of thing, but they were not scientists. They were not educated people. But when George Washington told his troops to get vaccinated, they did. And back then, the inoculation for smallpox meant that you took a bit of crusty pus from the arm of somebody who had smallpox, and you slit some part of their body and you inserted that crusty pus into that, and that's how people were inoculated. And still, 2% or 3% of those inoculated people died anyway, but not 30% to 50% like if they had been unvaccinated. So this is my long-winded way of saying, get vaccinated. Thank you.
Never thought I'd be so happy to see a needle. Counselor Claffey.
Madam Mayor, the nominating committee met on September 7, 2021, and we would like to appoint Stephanie Caboclo as the American Shakespeare Center Representative on the Tourism Advisory Board for an indefinite term.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. It's coming from a committee, so it does not need a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Smith, please call the roll.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Ms. Doll.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. All right, last chance, guys. Any additional items by members of council? Hearing none, we'll move on to the approval of minutes. I'll entertain a motion to approve the city council retreat of August 10 and 11, 2021.
Mayor Oaks, this is Brenda Mead.
Counselor Mead.
Having not attended the retreat, I will not vote on those, to approve those minutes.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor.
Counselor Claffey.
I move that we approve the minutes of the city council retreat of August 10 and 11, 2021, as presented.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Mayor Oaks, I'll second that.
Counselor Darby is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Smith, please call the roll.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Doll.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Abstain.
Thank you. Motion carries.
All right, thank you. The next item is a worship, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes for the work session and regular meeting of August 26, 2021.
Madam Mayor.
Counselor Claffey.
I move to approve the work session and regular meeting minutes of the August 26, 2021, as presented.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
I'll second that.
We have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Smith, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Ms. Doll.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. So that takes us to the regular meeting. The first item is item A, a public hearing in consideration of a request by Miller &amp; Associates LLC to amend Title 18 zoning of the Stanton City Code by adding Chapter 18.71B5, mixed-use business district. Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor, Rodney Rhodes, our senior planner, will present this item as well as the subsequent three items.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor Oaks, city council members. As the mayor noted, the first request is by Robert Miller &amp; Associates to request, is a request of an amendment to add a new chapter to the zoning ordinance to allow a mix of businesses and residential uses in a mixed-use business district. The purpose of this is to encourage appropriate infill development on undeveloped land, promote adaptive reuse of underutilized buildings, or enable redevelopment of properties where continuation of current uses is not feasible. In your packet of information, staff has provided a table with the particulars of this new district. I would note that the primary purpose of this district is the flexibility it provides for developers. And I will go over a few of those items. It provides a flexibility of uses, parking, setbacks, and heights. As far as the permitted uses, those uses that are currently permitted by right in the B2, General Business District, and the R4, High Density Residential District, will be permitted in this mixed-use development. Regarding parking, the adjoining on-street parking would count towards the parking requirement, which is similar to our traditional neighborhood development district. Private on-street parking within 400 feet of the development would also count towards the parking requirement. That is similar to what we currently allow for commercial businesses. That was an amendment that the council approved a couple of years ago for residential, I mean for commercial. This would be for residential or commercial. So it could be within 400 feet. As far as the number of parking spaces, this district would require one and a half spaces per two units, so basically three-quarters of a parking space. Currently, for, in our zoning ordinance for multifamily use, we require two parking spaces per unit. So this is a significant reduction. I believe what we currently have in our ordinance needs to be amended. It doesn't, we require only one space for a detached, single-family home, but two for an apartment. That's backwards from most jurisdictions, so that's something that needs to be amended in a future time. This is something new about this district is that it encourages people to walk and to bicycle, and it requires parking facilities for bicycles. So that'd be new to the city. It also has provisions for shed parking space. So if the business shuts down at 5:00 or so, then that, those parking spaces could be utilized for the residential aspect of the development. As far as setbacks and heights, there are minimal setback requirements similar to our commercial districts, and the height limits are based on the adjoining development. So it's compatible with adjoining development. Also, it doesn't include a maximum lot coverage or open space requirement that some of our other zoning districts currently have. In order to be more of a human scale, there are requirements that would be windows, glass openings on the buildings, more so on the first floor. There's also, there would not be parking between the building and the street. And also, as far as access to the parking, that would normally be done from alleyways or from secondary roads, would not be off the principal road. Sorry. A mixed-use district is needed in Stanton to assist with the redevelopment of vacant buildings and properties. As the new zoning district is implemented, further refinement of the regulations may be necessary. The planning commission and staff both realize that it's hard to really see what this impact this district would have on the city, on future developments, and that as it is implemented, we may need to go back and tweak it a little bit. But we think this is a very good first start. And I would note that all potential developments under this new district would have to be rezoned to this before they could be developed. So each one would be handled on a case-by-case basis. They would go to planning commission for recommendation, and ultimately, the city council for approval. And I would also note that with this new zoning district, you can save some historic properties that are not in the historic district by finding alternative uses for those buildings. The planning commission conducted a public hearing on August 19, 2021. During the public hearing, no one spoke in opposition to the request, and on a 5-0 vote, the commission unanimously voted to recommend approval of the proposed zoning code amendment. I would also note that staff has not received any public comments regarding tonight's public hearing. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have tonight or after you conduct the public hearing.
Are there any questions?
I'm sorry, Mayor Oaks, I'd like to ask Ms. Rhodes a question. This is Brenda Mead.
Counselor Mead.
So, Mr. Rhodes, why do we, why do we make the height requirement in terms of stories and not feet? Given that the number of stories, the height of a four-story building could vary significantly because there aren't any real standards for commercial and residential development in terms of ceiling heights or story heights?
Our current ordinance sometimes references floors, sometimes it references heights, sometimes it does a combination of the two. Staff does not believe that someone is going to build an excessively tall building if they're limited to four stories. Heights cost money. So we do not believe that someone's going to build an excessively tall building if they only approve for four stories. Also, you're getting into the issue of controlling the number of floors, I think, controls the size of the development, more so than just the height. You can also have stories below grade. So in our zoning ordinance, I'm looking at an example. In our B2, General Business District, we say no building or structure should exceed six stories or 75 feet in height, whichever is less. So that would also be an option, that we could add that language in here to something similar to that. Staff does not believe that is necessary. I would note that in our multifamily, high-density district, we have no height limit.
Okay, and the other question I had is that, is there's a requirement that where there's a, that five stories would be allowed when an entire block is developed under one development plan? So does that mean that somebody could take a block, raise the entire block, just a white if, and build an entire block of a five-story structure?
The way the current draft is written, yes, that is a possibility. Staff envisions a more likely scenario that there would be a mixture of heights of buildings, but that is certainly a possibility. Obviously, requiring, the parking requirements are also going to restrict the amount of units you can put on any particular lot, though.
Okay, and so what you're saying is that this, that we would have the flexibility within this zoning to look at developments on a project-by-project basis, and then have the opportunity to amend or reduce a development because it's not proportional to the neighborhood for an entire block of a five-story building. uh, for an entire block of a five-story building, yeah, to be built. Is that, is, is, do I understand that correctly?
I, I believe you're going a little bit further than, um, the, the ordinance. Uh, that the ordinance could permit a block of five-story buildings, the way it is written, if they met all the other requirements, including parking. Um, so it's, when someone comes in for a rezoning, they'd be looked on a case-by-case, um, basis whether or not that proper is, that property is appropriate for this new zoning classification. But obviously, you're not looking at the details at that time. And, and obviously, a developer does not want to get it, go to the expense of hiring an architect, um, before he knows whether or not he can get the zoning of the property.
Okay, thanks.
This is Carolyn Dole.
Counselor Dole.
Uh, I had questions about the height, too. I was just curious why the minimum height was two stories, not one. I don't know why we wouldn't allow a one-story, but, uh, I don't know. I'm asking the question, I guess. And then with the maximum height, it's listed as four stories or the height of an other building on the same lot or adjacent lot, or five stories when an entire block is developed under one development plan. You know, it seems to me either we ought to say four stories or we ought to say five stories for, for the maximum height. Um, I'm not sure why we need that, if this, then that. Do we, I mean, and maybe I, I don't know a scenario. I don't know the, the scenario that might come up that would require us to say four stories, but, but it could be then the height of other buildings on the adjacent lot, or it can be five stories. Uh, so I don't know if you can add any, any, uh, specific, like, examples or something to help me understand why we need that, uh, language.
Well, I think, uh, um, the applicant may be able to address, you know, the minimum of two stories unless it's a porch or something like that. I'd let him address that during his comments. As far as, you know, four stories or five, um, the, the five stories is dependent on there being surrounding development of that same height. Um, if not, uh, it'd be limited to four stories. Or, as you noted, if you're doing an entire block, um, then that, then they could do five stories. But the idea there is, everything would be comparable.
All right.
Mr. Rhodes.
Um, Mr. Blair.
Just, just to add in, and again, as Mr. Rhodes stated, Counselor Dole, the, uh, applicant will probably discuss the two stories, but part of it may be simply the idea of mixed use and, and just the idea that different stories have mixed, different uses, rather than a one-story building may have just, would be one use, so you may not use this designation.
Um, does counsel wish to hear from the applicant at this time?
Yes.
Okay. Welcome.
Madam Mayor, councilors, uh, thank you for having us. Uh, let me just try to start from the beginning. This is type of mixed-use zoning is, is being implemented, has been implemented in most major cities, uh, throughout the United States. Uh, the reason is to encourage adaptive reuse of existing buildings or vacant lots, to encourage mixed use. The question about the two-story building is exactly, as was mentioned, which would be the first floor, could be commercial, perhaps a restaurant, perhaps a business, and up above, uh, apartment or apartments, so that you could have dwelling units there. And the, uh, the whole idea behind this is for a developer to come in and take a, a vacant building or several vacant buildings or vacant lots, uh, you need to have, know what the rules are before you start. And, uh, it's very expensive to get architects to come up with a full-blown plan before you know the zoning. So in this particular case, um, we are proposing a specific tract of land, which will come up next, but for other developers that may come in the future, it would be up to the planning commission and City Council to determine if that particular parcel was eligible for the B5 zoning or not. And at that point, counsel may or may not, or the planning commission may or may not ask for additional information or further clarification or perhaps conceptual plans. Uh, this particular site is, is the Stanton Steam site that we're looking at, and, um, we, we hope to save all the old buildings, and, um, we're not planning to tear them down and build a five-story building there.
Right. Are there any questions? Right. Thank you. Okay, at this time, I will, um, I will open up the public hearing for the public to be able to speak, whether you are for or against this measure. Um, once everybody's had the opportunity to speak, I will then bang the gavel, and that'll close the public hearing out, and I'll entertain a motion. Before doing so, our city attorney has something for me to read. Public hearing. In a moment, I will open up the public hearing. It is a time that counsel sets aside to hear from citizens and others about a specific topic. We ask that you please give your name, your address, and then keep your remarks at five minutes or less. When you reach the five-minute time limit, I will let you know that your time limit has expired. For our Zoom participants, please raise your hand now if you wish to speak on a particular public hearing. If you raise your hand during the public hearing, you also be able to raise your hand during the council meeting for public hearings and matters from the public, and keep your comments to five minutes as well. Once everyone who wishes to speak has had an opportunity, I will then close the public hearing. I will now open the public hearing. So if you wish to speak, please approach the podium, and we'll alternate between individuals physically present and those that have their hands raised via the Zoom platform. And with that, the public hearing is now open. Would anyone from the audience care to address the counsel? Welcome.
My name is Albino Albert Fassa. I live at 401 Bowling Street. I am a former physicist, mathematician, and chemist with almost a doctorate degree. I hear about raised houses. I read in the newspaper a couple of weeks back, or maybe a couple of months back, where a large apartment house collapsed. It collapsed. They gave a reason why it collapsed, but they never really gave a strong reason. Obviously, they did note geophysical examination of the property. The property itself was unstable. In Stanton, you have many, many caves. Many slime, limestone caves, which makes it very, very unstable. If you're going to put up these apartment houses and let them rise and rise and rise, and I also worry about the, all the apartment houses that are over on Gypsy Bell, uh, mountain there. Have they ever done any geophysical investigations of the properties? That's what bothers me. I don't believe, I've never heard of any geophysical examinations of properties. At one time, there was an article with the County of Augusta. Somebody wanted to put in a development, and all of a sudden, somebody found out that the property was sitting on a bunch of caves, which automatically nulls the use of that property. I hope that if you're going to put high-rises in here in Stanton, that you do some geophysical examinations before you even think about giving a permit. Thank you. And there's one other thing I want to talk about. Uh, that gentleman was a, uh, a gentleman from the planning board, I presume. At the intersection of Pump Street and North Central Street, I noticed that there are obstacles that are going into the street. Why are you putting obstacles in that street and making it more narrow? I find it hard to believe, being a former fireman and first-aid or CPR instructor and all of that stuff, that the large fire truck will be able to make the turn from Pump Street all the way into Central Avenue there without causing an accident. You have the road, it's open. Why isn't it not open? If you want to put trees on that road, put them between the sidewalk and the creek and not in the middle of the road. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Fassa, I'm sorry, we did not have the clock for you.
It, it was going on mine. I was watching it. He still had two minutes left.
Okay, can, can we?
Yes, I just texted Zach.
To try to get it, um, up on the screen so everybody can, on the monitor, so everybody can see how much time they have. Okay, um, so Ms. Smith, you are keeping track?
I am, I am.
Okay, thank you. Would anyone else like to address this issue? Oh, here we go. If we can start that clock over.
I will. I did not have anyone on Zoom. I did.
Correct, thank you. Nobody on Zoom, okay. Thank you.
Good evening, members of council. Uh, my name is Frank Strassler. I live at 16 North Washington Street. And, uh, of course, my office with the Historic Stanton Foundation is at 20 South New Street. Um, I read the council packet with great interest. Uh, this project going forward, um, is a moment, I believe, of excellence for Stanton. The project incorporates a number of goals that are, uh, laid out in the comprehensive plan. Um, it is clearly a project designed for sustainability, um, in terms of the adaptive reuse of historic structures and the proposal of potential new structures located within an existing neighborhood. Uh, this project can only help Sirius Hill and Dogwood Hill in, um, the quality of, um, rehabilitation and the proven quality that these developers have shown Stanton. Um, and it, it truly helps to protect, uh, historic buildings in these beautiful historic neighborhoods. Um, I, I couldn't be more excited about a new step forward for Stanton. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Ms. Smith, anyone on Zoom? Do they have their hand up?
Mayor Oaks, I have no one with their hands raised.
All right. Would anyone else from the public like to address the counsel concerning this issue? Hi. Welcome.
My name is Lisa Hatter. I live on Chutterly Mill Road in Stanton. Um, I happen to work in Charlottesville. Um, my company is surrounded by Stonefield, which is a mixed-use, um, designation. And it is, it, it's a great, um, opportunity for people to walk down the street to get ice cream. Um, I think it will bring more people into the city, and I think it's a great idea.
Great, thank you. All right, one last try. Anyone with their hand raised?
I have no one with their hands raised.
All right. With that, the public hearing is now closed, and I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Mayor Oaks.
Counselor Claffey.
I move that counsel adopt the ordinance and approve the zoning code amendment, adding Chapter 18.71 B5, mixed-use business de, district as recommended by the planning commission.
Right, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Mayor Oaks, I will second that.
All right, Counselor Darby is second. Any further discussion?
This is Brenda Mead.
Counselor Mead.
I'm very much in favor of adaptive reuse of the, the many empty buildings we have that will nev, like, like Stanton Steam Laundry, that will never again, uh, be used for its original purpose. And, and, uh, if Mr. Miller and Ms. Bean, uh, can turn that, uh, uh, old factory into residence and a thriving little mini-community, I am all for it. My only concern is that, that, that we be vigilant about the nature of construction, the nature of development that we, that we see in our city, to make sure it's consistent with, uh, with the character of our architecture and with our, um, our commitment to historic preservation. Thanks.
Right. Are there any additional comments? All right, I would also like to state that, um, this is very exciting for the city of Stanton, and I believe that this is a step forward for that part of our city. Um, well, frankly, all of Stanton for that matter. So I would like to thank Miller and Associates, and I will be supporting this measure. Ms. Smith, please call the roll.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Dole.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right. The next item is item B, a public hearing in consideration of a request to rezone 108 West Hampton Street, 110 West Hampton Street, 119 West Hampton Street, 710 Robertson Street, and 709 Hall Street from I-1 Light Industrial District to B5 Mixed-Use Business District, 103 West Hampton Street from B1 Local Business District to B5 Mixed-Use Business District, and 514 Fute Street from R3 Medium Density Residential District to B5 Mixed-Use Business District. I feel like yelling bingo. All right, Mr. Rosenberg.
Again, Mr. Rhodes will present this item.
Welcome back, Mr. Rhodes.
Thank you. Um. This is a request, uh, by Lee Bean, owner and Robert Miller and Associates, contract purchaser, to rezone those, uh, lots that the mayor, um, noted, uh, to be, to this new district, B5 Mixed-Use Business District. The properties are located at the end of West Hampton Street, near its intersection with Middlebrook Avenue. As shown on, on this slide, it's on actually both sides of Hampton Streets. So it's in, in the entire block, you know, south of Hampton Street, and then has these three parcels on the north side. Uh, the properties were previously used, I'm sure as everyone knows, as part of Stanton Steam Laundry, um, which was here from 1912 to 2020. Uh, staff has reviewed this resounding request and has not identified any issues. The resounding of this property would be the first step in the re, redevelopment process. A master plan may be required. Site plans for each phase certainly would be required. Subdivision plants would be required to combine lots, and obviously, building permits would be required. All of those are administrative process after tonight, though. Um, the applicant has noted that the multifamily, uh, will be the predominant use of the property. However, the B5 district, um, affords the ability to have some small-scale commercial that would be compatible with the residential use. Um, go on to the next slide, if I can.
Just use the arrows at the bottom where you can use your arrow keys.
All right. I was trying to do that. Um.
And if you need to shrink it, use the, um, there you go.
Thank you. Um, as far as surrounding zoning and uses in this area, as you can see, that what's in yellow is residential. Um, B1 is that, is that purple? Um, so most of the surrounding property is residential with some commercial. Um, but obviously, um, and, and these that are zone residential by and large are single-family houses. There's a few commercial, um, and office spaces in this purple area. Um. The City of Stanton Conference of Plan 2018 to 2040 Future Land Use Map designates this area as medium-density residential and industrial. Um, however, we're certain that the designation for industrial was placed there because there was an industrial enterprise going on there for 100 years. Um, if you look at the surrounding development pattern, obviously, industrial is not, um, the, the preferred or appropriate land use designation for this part of the city anymore. Um, staff believes that this property is an ideal candidate for the new mixed-use zoning district. The existing buildings are not configured in a manner that is conducive for other industrial uses. Industrial use is now incompatible with surrounding development, which, as we see, is mostly residential. And, um, the property's proximity to downtown, bus stops, is a bus stop on basically both ends of West Hampton Streets. Um, and existing sidewalk network lends itself to multimodal use. I would also note that, um, studies over the past two years have noted that both Middlebrook Avenue and Greenville Avenue have, have excess, access, excess capacity and are recommended for road diets to install, construct, um, bicycle lanes. The planning commission conducted a public hearing on this on August 19th, 2021. Uh, during the public hearing, no one spoke. During the public hearing, no one spoke in opposition to the request, and on a five-to-zero vote, the commission unanimously voted to recommend approval of the proposed rezoning. I would note that we also have not received any public comments regarding tonight's public hearing. And one last thing, is this proposed adaptive reuse of the site provides a viable alternative use to these historic buildings. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have at this time or after you conduct the public hearing.
Right, are there any questions for Mr. Rhodes at this time?
This is Brenda Mead.
Counselor Mead?
Mr. Rhodes, are there sidewalks along Middlebrook Avenue to, so the folks can walk downtown from the site?
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks.
I've walked it many times.
Oh, good.
All right, would council like to hear from the applicant, or are we good?
I would.
All right. Welcome, Ms. Bean.
Hi, Lee.
My name is Lee Bean. I live at 54 Fairfield Court, which unfortunately is just now outside of Stanton, but I moved five years ago. On behalf of my family, my brother Tom, my sister Becky, I'm here today. I did this planning commission, too. It's kind of sad, but after 108 years in the city in business, it became apparent to us that the next step was going to be having to spend a whole lot of money to probably possibly even move our operation to another location because of the efficiencies we needed with different equipment, just different delivery systems. As I told planning commission, I don't think, I think when my grandfather built that property there, and the 27 is when the main building was built, I think it was probably just on the edge of kind of Stanton activity, and he didn't realize how much would develop around it. And it obviously wasn't the best use for that spot, but it was there, and we used it, you know, up until November of 2020. When we reached the decision that we were going to sell the company, our plan was to find somebody who wanted to come in and operate in that location. And because we were unique in our industry and that we were 50% industrial laundry, uniforms, shop towels, highly industrialized, and then the other 50% was linen, hotels, motels, restaurants, colleges, universities, it would be unlikely that people, any one company would want to come in and buy us. And if they did, they would have the same problem in that location we had. So our goal started out to look to somebody to buy the industrial, which was probably the place where it needed the most use to become more effective and efficient, and then find somebody that would want to buy the existing operation. And frankly, there isn't any company in the valley, in Shandell Valley, that operates a linen plant, and we thought that that was highly likely. And then COVID came in March of 2020, and all of us who were in the linen business saw our business levels drop up to, ours dropped 80%. The remaining business dropped from what should have been $50,000 a week in May last year to $8,500 one week, lowest I've ever seen. And so our option to sell to someone who had been discussing it, they still wanted the volume, but they couldn't see their way to buying the buildings. So they were going to buy them and renovate and basically make both of our big plants into linen plants, but that fell through. So we waited it out, and we hoped the business would come back towards the fall. And when the colleges opened up and said, "We're not going to do catering, and we're not going to have, you know, outdoor activities, and we're not going to bring a bunch of people in here to have events and have conferences," and we knew that, you know, we had to move forward. So the next big question for our family became, what are we going to do with these properties? Because the last thing we wanted to do was to ever have something be a blight on the community. We knew that the one small building on the north side of Hampton, there were a lot of people who wanted that nice little building. It could make great auto repair, whatever. That was not a problem. The other three buildings were possibly problematic. And the one at the corner of Hall and Peabody Street was the old National Guard Armory. There was history there. Our building was built in the late 20s. The last one was when, was built when White Way Laundry burned down across town. And I heard a lot of people want more breweries or, you know, retail places where people could have entertainment, and I was sure the neighborhood would love that, you know, concert hall late in the evening. And then there was a lot of people who said warehousing. Well, warehousing would just add even more trucks probably per day coming than what we had. So we reached out to a broker who talked about all those options, and then said, "I want to bring someone in to look at this, who I think might have some suggestion." He has, he has experience in doing this in Harrisonburg, and that was Dane Hammond, who will be speaking in a minute. And so Dane came in and got kind of excited about adaptive reuse. And then he brought Robin Miller in, and they got excited. And then the first thing everyone said is, "We really have to look at some type of zoning change." So obviously, I'm here to support the rezoning because it will allow them to put together their plan, which is mostly in their head right now. But it's going to honor the legacy that Stanton Steam had on the hill. It's going to honor the buildings that are there and are beautiful. And I read Frank Strassler's write-up for historic credits as to all the cool things about the building, which I look at the building, and it's a brick building, but Frank knows what's really special about it. And so I hope it all can come true, because it really would be a dream of ours to leave something behind that my grandfather built in 1927. So, thank you. I'll let them talk.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is Carolyn Dole.
Counselor Dole?
For Lee, tell Tommy hi. But also, keep in mind that your grandfather allowed Stanton to be an earlier, early adopter of mixed use.
There you go. That's something good to remember, too. So thank you so much, Carol. Carolyn and my brother went to high school together.
Welcome back.
Councilmember staff, my name is Dane Hammond. Ms. Bean referred to me earlier.
Radio voice.
Sorry?
The radio voice.
Yeah, I've heard that before. 5 East Beverly Street is my residence. Sorry, I forgot that. Ms. Bean, we're candid that I was called to come in. My background, downtown Richmond, a lot of historic renovation there. Harrisonburg, we're doing a few projects downtown. Kind of became a passion of mine. I serve on Historic Stanton Foundation. Stands the home. Moved here in the mid-'70s. My father started the business here. I still run the business on Beverly Street. I've raised my kids here. Committed whether it's professionally or voluntarily to associations like the Historic Stanton Foundation to preserving this area. It's a passion of mine. It's what I do. We're doing folly mills, the old mills down below Stanton. Mixed use is kind of a specialty of mine as well. Harrisonburg, my note from Corgan's Pub, the high-rise on the hill. We have built the tallest building in Harrisonburg, and another one down the street, the largest building. I've met some flack on that height. I pride myself on urban development, future planning. The pride of that 865, the high-rise that we built, first mixed use. We helped craft the rezoning for that as well and create the ordinance. It's worked out extremely well. Bringing people in denser, closer, public transportation, walkability, this fits that. This fits the historic preservation. And this is a lot, this is kind of the background of where I'm coming from. I grew up here. I've looked at that building. It's beautiful. First time I was the best man in the wedding. Tuxes didn't show up clean on a Friday night for a Saturday morning wedding. My father was like, "I'll call Colonel Wade. Don't worry about this." They opened the plan on a Friday night to get us taken care of. The reason I'm saying that, that's Stanton. That's community helping each other out. So I've grown up here since the '70s. The name's Broker called me, and I looked at the place. As we've said, this is not feasible for reuse as an industrial. It's going to be torn down and something else. I was like, "No, wait, we got to save this." From the historic part, honoring the legacy, this family is an economic engine. I've had to research this back to the 20s. It is phenomenal what the family did. We owe it to them. But this is outside of my scope and expertise. This is a big project, and I wanted to do it right. I'm know enough when I'm in over my head. So the first thing I did when I walked out of the parking lot was call Mr. Miller, who does not need introduction, dedicated to the same things. I was like, "I need some help. We got to figure this out." So Robin and I have partnered, worked with Beans on our plans. We have a good idea. We want to do mixed use. We want to extend downtown Stanton out that direction. So that's where this comes from. This is the background of where the project began six, seven months ago. So I'm here for any questions you have, but that's the premise of why I'm here and trying to get this done.
All right, well, thank you. Are there any questions or comments?
This is Brenda Mead.
Counselor Mead?
So I am just intrigued. I look at this aerial map of these buildings, and I've driven past many times, and I certainly don't have the vision that you all have for adaptive reuse. I will say that I am all about adaptive reuse. And I, and density, and walkability, and living closer to downtown, I think it benefits the community. I wonder if you could just maybe spitball a little bit for me what your vision is of what this might look like? I'm just having trouble with it.
Sure. Some people call it vision. Some people call me crazy, but this is what I do, and Mr. Miller as well. I think we've seen his vision once played out. 80 apartments, plus or minus, maybe a coffee shop. The commercial use is going to be dictated by the demand of the surrounding neighborhood. The neighborhood will spend money on and wants and desires. That's what we're going to give them. We're not raising any buildings. Frank would kill me if I tore down one of these buildings. I would not feel, I wouldn't sleep if I did. We all have a passion for preserving history. That's kind of what we do. So the existing buildings, maybe the metal ones will dress up a little bit on the outside to tie in a little bit better. But the two main historic buildings, the steam plant and the armory, which was originally a woolen mill, we're going to preserve those and to the standard they are, the facade that they have now. But I envision a small community there, an extension of downtown. People don't realize you can walk to the farmer's market. It's less than a quarter mile. It's right next to downtown. And I think it's going to extend downtown out just a little bit. So that's my vision, a small community, 80 apartments, a couple of little specialty shops. That's what I'm looking at.
And because we've been talking a lot about affordable housing in Stanton and the need for housing to meet the needs of our entry-level workers, our firemen, teachers, police officers, and I know it's very early, and you probably don't even have conceptual drawings yet of what this might look like. But is that part of the consideration for you that these residences be in that sort of range of affordability for young people?
Yes, we, when I look at a project from the urban planning, my background, you've got to have that. And then when we, if we brought 80 more apartments, it's going to bring pricing down, just sheer economics if you bring that much mass to an area. So yes, this takes care of it naturally and economically. We're going to do what's best in business downtown, yes. So I see your vision and where you're going. That definitely factors into what we're trying to do here.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Robin, can you give me an idea? What are you, kind of timeframe are we talking about? I mean, is from, once we get all the, you know, the permits and that type of stuff going?
Well, there you hit the nail on the head. We got to get all the permits and the civil engineering, the environmental engineering, got to hire the architects. We got to pick our conceptual plan, to schematic plan, to real plan. Once we get all that, then we got to find a bank that'll lend us some money to do it. I would, we're going to go full steam ahead as fast as we can. And so I would hope that we can have, I'd like to have a permit in hand in the next six to 12 months. That depends on a lot of factors, and then we don't, we can't break ground until we have our loan in place. And so, but we do plan to phase it, three phases. We're not going to do the entire site at one time. We're still debating which to go first with. We're kind of leaning towards the corner building, the main building now, with the most visible building with all the glass, spectacular building. And it would be basically divided where you see a steel beam between the windows, because that front is all glass. And on the lower level, there were windows there one time that had been bricked in. We would open those windows up so that you would have a two-story structure, two levels of dwelling units there. How big they're going to be is a combination of market demand and just the pure design of the building. We can only, we can't say, well, we want them all to be 600 square feet or 1,200 square feet. It's where the walls are, and the architect, the design of the building now will largely dictate what we can put in there. We have to have two means of egress, so you got to get your corridors in there, where do you enter, and all the fire codes, building codes. It's a mismatch. It's a lot harder to do an adaptive reuse of an existing building and to build from scratch. That's kind of why Dane and I like it. It's a challenge.
Mrs. Brenda Mead, I have another question. I apologize for interrupting you, Mr. Miller, but are there four and five-story buildings on this site already?
No, no, we're not going any higher than what you see now.
Thank you.
That zoning ordinance was based on ordinances in many other cities, particularly Richmond. It's much more broad than this particular site. But we thought that that ordinance allows a developer to come in and take a potential site and give him a ray of hope that, hey, if he can get this zoning passed by planning commission and city council, he may come and further expand and use some of your vacant land or underutilized or obsolete buildings.
Thanks. And Mr. Hammond, I have a question for you. You mentioned that you've done some of this work in downtown Richmond?
Yes, ma'am.
And so which, which, which projects in downtown Richmond did you do?
209, 210, 213 East Clay, 420 North First Street, 710 Mumford, 410 East Clay.
Thank you.
Does scale, yeah.
All right.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
No.
All right, well, thank you.
Very much.
With that, I will bang the gavel, and that'll open up the public hearing. If you would like to speak for or against this measure, please feel free to do so. Once again, I'll start with the audience in attendance tonight, and then we'll go to the folks raising their hand on Zoom. With that, the public hearing is now open. Would anyone from the audience care to address the council? We have the clock working for you, Mr. Fossa.
Five minutes?
Five minutes.
Well, I'm only going to take two.
Okay.
Okay, so you save the other couple of minutes for later in the evening. All right?
I wish we could, but the attorney says no.
This sounds like a good idea. Stanton has to change. It's an opportunity to get a, shall we say, a commercial business out of a residential area. And before you accept or vote on something like this, they should be able to produce a model of what this thing is going to look like. If they can't produce a model, then that's a problem because only 12% of what you hear, you can encompass, whereas 45% of what you see, you can encompass very nicely. Thank you.
Thank you. Great. Ms. Smith, does anyone have their hand raised?
I think we do. Just one moment.
All right.
Caller, please give your name and address. I'm asking her to unmute. Ms. Birch, could you please unmute your... So we can hear you? Ms. Birch, are you on? Hello?
We can't get her?
No, I mean, she says she's on, but it's not.
I'll tell you what, we'll go ahead and allow Mr. Jennings to speak, and we'll come back. Welcome.
Welcome. My name is Baldwin Jennings, 332 Sharon Lane, Stanton. I grew up over on Cirrus Hill. And back in the early days, they had the laundry on the corner. They had the big boiler plant, and they had a chimney whistle. They blew the whistle, I think, at noon every day and 6 o'clock or something in the afternoon. In other words, that was the time we had to get home each supper when they blew the whistle. But, and above the... the building was a coke factory. And it was two, two businesses. But anyway, we had this big field there beside it. And every Sunday afternoon, it was a big playoff ball. It was football season, it's football. It was baseball season, it was baseball, whatever, basically between the blacks and the whites. And that was, and anyway, it was a great time and kind of brought the community together. And anyway, I'm glad to see it should be developed because that is a great area of town. Sears Hill, Dogwood Hill. And we used to sleigh ride off Robinson Street and the city blocked off the street where we sleigh ride. And anyway, that was a great place to grow up in. And it's, it's, it's bringing us back a lot of memories. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Ms. Smith. Do we have the caller?
Asking that person to unmute? It's not working.
Anyone else in the audience? Right. Still?
It's still not.
Okay. All right. Well, with that, the public hearing is now closed. I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor Oaks, this is Brenda Mead.
Counselor Mead.
I move that council adopt the ordinance and approve the rezoning as recommended by the planning commission.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Mayor Oaks, I second that.
Counselor Darby has second. Any further discussion? I would just like to say that it is my belief, tonight is a good night for the city of Stanton.
It's exciting.
And Lee, I had the honor of meeting your father and he would be so proud. I will be supporting this action item. Ms. Smith, please call the roll.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Dole.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And thank you. Right. The next item is item C, a public hearing and consideration of a request by Emily Lauer on behalf of U.S. Cellier for a special use permit for two fifty North Jefferson Street. Mr. Rosenberg.
Mayor, Mr. Rhodes will present this item.
All right. The Mr. Rhodes show.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Once again, let me get to the right slide.
So if you close that.
I need to close this one?
Yes, close that one. And open up item C.
Okay. If I could see item C, right here.
Right there.
This request is a special use permit to expand the fenced equipment compound area for an existing 190-foot telecommunications tower at two fifty North Jefferson Street. This tower was constructed, I believe, back in the mid 1990s. The property is zone R3 medium density residential district. Communication towers are allowed in all zoning districts, but only with a special use permit. Since this is an expansion of existing facility, although a very small expansion, it requires a new special use permit. The applicant proposes to expand the compound area by approximately 300 square feet. Move on to the next slide. This triangular shaped area is proposed expansion. The existing compound area has extensive screening and that would also be required for this new fenced-in area. I would note that this proposed expansion is within the existing leased area. Therefore, a new lease agreement with the city is not required. Staff has reviewed this request and has found no issues with the proposal. The information provided is complete and in general conformance with the requirements of chapter 18.185, which deals with telecommunication towers. Plan Commission conducted a public hearing on this matter on August 19th, 2021. No one spoke in opposition to this request at that meeting. And on a five zero vote, the commission unanimously voted to recommend approval of a special use permit. I would note that we have received one email, I believe that came in today, to all the council members from a citizen regarding this proposal. That that was the only communications we've had regarding tonight's public hearing. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have at this time or after you conduct the public hearing. I believe we're supposed to have a representative on Zoom?
She'll be right there.
Okay. Do we have any questions for Mr. Rhodes at this?
This is Brenda Mead.
Counselor Mead.
Will this, this small expansion have any impact on the neighboring residents? This is all a residential area, right?
Yes, it is.
And, and so will it, will it, I mean, I, I know folks sort of adopt boundaries of their own and use property that probably doesn't belong to them. But I was just wondering if this might impinge or, or, or disrupt the use that the neighborhood has of this property?
No. This actually is a heavily wooded area right now that some of the existing screening. So it, no one's using this as their backyard, if that's basically what you're asking.
Yeah. And, and why, then why do they, why do they want this expansion?
In order to place their equipment. They are out of space within the fenced-in area for additional equipment. During the Plan Commission, the Plan Commission even asked, can you remove some of the existing equipment that's maybe outdated and, and put this new equipment in there? And we were told that that was not a possibility.
And, and the citizen who sent the email, I didn't get it. I don't know why. But what was the issue? And wasn't an object, what is, was it an objection to this expansion?
The, the email that the city received tonight was not an objection to this. I think it basically suggested that since this is city property, that they get the cell company to make some improvements to the park. However, that is not an appropriate condition for a special use permit because that is not directly related to the use. City council could put a condition on there saying, well, you have to use X type of fencing, or you have to have X type of screening. To say that you need to put a park bench for the resident, for the use of the park, or to put up additional signage or kiosks is not an appropriate condition.
Yeah, I agree. Wouldn't be a, it would be a nice thing for them to do, but certainly not an appropriate condition.
All right. Are there any additional questions? Okay.
This is Carolyn Dole. I just wondered if the representative wanted to make any comments.
I was just getting ready to invite Ms. Lauer if she wanted to speak. She unmuted?
She should be able to speak.
All right.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, yeah. Thank you all so much for having me. Yeah, this is just a simple expansion. This existing compound is extremely tight with all the existing things that are already there in the existing carriers. So Chantel asked us to just kind of close off that back corner, that that would make it easier because at this time, they didn't have anything that was removable for us to get space in their existing compound. And I'm happy to answer any other questions you all may have.
Are there any questions for Ms. Lauer?
This is Brenda Mead.
Counselor Mead.
Ms. Lauer, will the local residents be able to see the equipment? I think, isn't that at a higher elevation than most of the neighborhood? So will residents, even though there's a, there is a landscaped area around it, will residents be able to see the new equipment that's being placed on this?
They shouldn't. It's very minimal, I think, that of the existing kind of underbrush and small trees that have to be removed there. And U.S. Cellier has agreed to come back and put, you know, a four-foot landscape buffer all back in. But none of it seemed really visible when I was out there last year. You know, that would be direct sight to anyone.
Thank you.
All right. Any additional questions or comments? All right. Thank you, Ms. Lauer. I will, as before, I'll bang the gavel. This is a public hearing. If you would like to speak for or against this matter, please feel free to come to the podium or raise your hand in Zoom. And you'll have five minutes to speak. With that, the public hearing is now open. Would anyone from the audience care to speak? All right. Do we have anyone in Zoom?
No one on Zoom with their hand raised. No one.
Okay. One last, one last offer. All right. With that, the public hearing is now closed. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
I move that council approve the special use permit as recommended by the planning commission.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
This is Carolyn Dole. I second.
Counselor Dole has second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Smith, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Ms. Dole.
Aye.
Carries.
All right. Thank you. That leads us to item D. Surprise, surprise, a public hearing.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
If, if it please the mayor and my fellow members, I would like to ask permission to leave the dais as this particular item involves me.
Okay. So you would like to recuse yourself?
Yes.
All right. I'm okay with it. Is the rest of council okay with Vice Mayor Robertson stepping aside? And are you going to sit in the audience?
Not in the front, yes.
Okay.
I think that's very appropriate. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. So the next item is item D, a public hearing and consideration of a request by Mark A. Robertson to vacate and abandon a portion of an alley lying between two thirty-nine Thorn Rose Avenue and two fifty-eight Lancaster Avenue. Mr. Rosenberg.
I again present Mr. Rhodes.
Welcome back.
Thank you. I'm trying to find D.
It's there. It's right to the left.
First one. Thank you. The request before you this evening is by Mr. Mark Robertson. He's requesting the vacation of an alley that runs parallel and between the 200 block of Thorn Rose Avenue and 200 block of Lancaster Avenue. The alley was originally planted in 1907. It is 15 feet wide and it is a dead end alley. Back in 2000, this section of the alley was vacated. I believe that's behind two thirty-five Thorn Rose. So this area in yellow is what's being requested to be vacated now. As you would note, at no time did the alley continue all the way to Lancaster Avenue. So the residents along Thorn Rose do not have legal access to, to Lancaster Avenue from this alley, except during the Plan Commission's public hearing, the applicant noted that this property owner has a private easement that goes from the back of his property to Lancaster Avenue. But he is the only one that has legal access through this property that fronts on Lancaster. The applicant noted that it is his intention to combine these two lots, the one that fronts on Thorn Rose, right here, and the one that fronts on Lancaster, therefore creating one parcel, a through street. And then at that time, he would apply for building permits for an accessory structure, a garage on this portion of the property. I believe state staff has noted that normally staff would not be supportive of vacating just a portion of an alley. Because if you vacate a portion of an alley normally, then you're preventing through access from one street to another. This alley never had through access. So staff does not see an issue with vacating another 48 feet of the alley. As I noted, that people that are on Thorn Rose now that utilize this are going through Mr. Robertson's property in order to gain access to Lancaster. But they do not have a easement to do so. The Plan Commission conducted a public hearing on this on August 19th, 2021. And during the public hearing, two people spoke. However, they were satisfied that the applicant would continue to permit passage from the alley to Lancaster Avenue. And on a five to zero vote, the commission unanimously voted to recommend approval of the alley vacation. And once again, I would note that no public comments have been received regarding tonight's public hearing. I'd be glad to answer any questions if you have at this time or after you conduct the public hearing.
All right. Are there any questions for Mr. Rhodes?
This is Brenda Mead.
Counselor Mead.
So I, I went to Lancaster and, and circled, went down Lancaster, saw the dead end sign. And when I got to the end of Lancaster, saw that there was a route to circle around and get through that alley behind Mr. Robertson's home and the other homes on Thorn Rose Avenue. So how were residents satisfied that their access to travel the way I did would not be impeded by, by allowing this vacation?
Well, the two people that attended the Planning Commission public hearing were satisfied that Mr. Robertson, based on his comments, he would continue to allow that based on his word. I mean, there's no legal document or easement that would guarantee that.
So a future, a future owner of Mr. Robertson's home could discontinue that practice at, at will?
That's correct.
Thanks. All right. Are there any other questions or comments? Would the council like to hear from the applicant? Vice Mayor Robertson?
Yes. As I, as I said, at the Planning Commission, is, it is my intention that I'm going to keep the alley open. I use the alley both ways myself. It does make it easier. The reason, as you see, two thirty-nine is one with the red roofs and there's a, a smaller garage there. And then where the, it says two fifty-eight Lancaster, that is the, the area that I would like to build a garage on that piece of property. The main reason for doing this is nothing more than simply to make it easier on zoning and to meet the zoning requirements that the city has, and also for setbacks. If there is no vacation of that alley, and then it becomes two separate areas of land, there is a total setback of 40 feet. If it is vacated, that 40 feet drops down to 32 feet. So you improve that by eight feet. And also, without having the zoning, the main reason is that if, because you cannot build quote unquote, an accessory building on a independent piece of property in a residential area without having a living space above it. So that means that I'd have to, you'd have to put a one-room efficiency or build a one-room apartment above that. And that is what I am trying to keep from having to do.
Are there any questions for Mr. Robertson? Mr. Robertson, has this alleyway always been accessible?
No. When I first moved there in 88, the alley came up from Allegheny. And right about where you see the beginning of that red structure, right next to that yellow area, that's where it stopped. The gravel ended there. And then it was all grass, except for two thirty-five's direct entrance off the back. At that time, it was owned by Mr. and Mrs. Bright. And then after their passing, a son in 2000 opened, or actually asked for the vacation of the blue area. And at that time, he just, he rounded it off and opened it up. And that, that's, that was in 2000. That's the first time since, like I said, this was planted in 1907. So, and like I said, to me, it's also a win-win for, yes, it helps me out, but I mean, it's going to help the city. going to help the city, because for the first time ever, to my knowledge, there's nothing ever been on that piece of property. So the city will at least gain permit rights and then they'll get increased personal property tax. Not that it's going to be a great, great deal amount, but still some.
I drove up through there just to take a look at it and check it out. It looks like it's, has gravel.
It is.
Has, has the city been maintaining the alleyway by putting gravel down?
No, no. Every, every couple of years, I pick a load down, put through it if there's some big gullies that go down through there. There were some big gullies that opened up back here with last year's big flood. Large portion of them ended up down Allegheny, down on Thorn Rose.
All right, any additional questions or comments? Thank you. With that, I will bang the gavel. If you'd like to speak for or against this particular action item, feel free. And same thing, I'll have the audience speak first. And then if anyone has their hand raised in Zoom, we'll allow them to speak. And then once everyone's had an opportunity, I will bang the gavel and that'll close the public hearing out and I'll entertain a motion. With that, the public hearing is now open. Would anyone from the audience care to speak? Welcome.
William Quintero, I'm property on Lancaster Avenue. It's 237, I think it is. I have one question. The planning commission, they said something about maybe Mr. Robertson said at a future date, like somebody bought it from him, that they could block it off at that time. You know, it just changed his mind, because basically it's up to him if it's vacated, right? And they said might be, it ought to be something in our specifying that it couldn't be blocked off at that present, you know, at a later date. And the other question I have is coming up off of Albemarle, people can still access it that way, can't they? Allegheny, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, they still come up there. Because I spoke with the planning commission. Other than that, I have no, no problem about it at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have their hand raised in Zoom?
No one has their hand raised.
All right, would anyone else in the audience? Oh, you're fine, Mr. Fosse. You're right to, to speak.
I have a question for Mr. Robinson. And a question, Mr. Robinson, will this bypass or whatever it is blockage, will it interfere with the movement of the fire engines or the police through that area?
Now, as I understand, I learned from some neighbors, because I'm usually gone there today, that city vehicles use it now. There is even a UPS.
And I see no reason why he should not be given what he wants.
Thank you, thank you. All right, one last try for the folks on Zoom. Any hands raised?
No hands raised on Zoom.
All right, with that, the public hearing is now closed. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Counselor Claffey?
I move that council adopt the ordinance vacating a portion of the alley located between 239 Thorn Rose Avenue and 258 Lancaster Avenue as recommended by the planning commission.
We have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Mayor Oaks.
Counselor Darby.
I second that.
All right, we have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Smith, please call the roll.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Dole.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. Okay, the next item is item E, consideration. Oh, yes, come on back up. Mr. Robertson, now you can put on your Vice Mayor Robertson's hat. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is item E, a consideration of resolution establishing the percentage of relief at 32% for purposes of the Personal Property Tax Relief Act. Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor, Commissioner of the Revenue Maggie Reagan will present this item.
Welcome, Commissioner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Each September, as you know, I come to you to recommend a percentage of the tax relief for personal property to be distributed across the fleet of motor vehicles in the city. In 2004, the General Assembly froze the amount of funds flowing from the state to localities for the purpose of personal property tax relief. Since that time, the City of Stanton receives $1,652,200. And it is my responsibility to suggest to you a percentage that will take that full amount of money and distribute it across the fleet of vehicles that are owned by the residents of the City of Stanton, which at this year I will be recommending that you approve at 32%. During the earlier work session, I shared with you some further information about effects of COVID on our personal property taxes this year. I'm happy to share that again if you'd like, but you are familiar with the information. So I will, I will do that at your request if, if so desired.
Actually, I would like it if you would, please.
Sure, be happy to. So there were several factors attributed to COVID-19 that have resulted in motor vehicle valuations rising from year 2020 to year 2021. And so many of our citizens will see higher assessments affecting them in their personal property tax bills this fall. In the spring of 2020, many automakers shut down or redirected their manufacturing efforts to produce ventilators and other necessary durable medical equipment. In addition, the Federal Reserve cut interest rates to historic lows, making low-interest car loans readily available to qualified buyers. Large fleet companies such as rental agencies and car services held on to their fleets rather than releasing them back into the re, the used market, since they were unable to replace those vehicles with new units. In late 2020, federal government stimulus funds gave many buyers down payments and persuaded them to buy vehicles they may not have otherwise considered buying. Wholesale prices have increased from 2020 to 2021. The average wholesale prices on popular models between 2017 and 2020 model years have increased anywhere from 10 to 26%. Increases in both price, price on new vehicles and trade-in values are giving owners more equity in their vehicle, therefore making it easier for them to trade up. And there are more manufacturer shutdowns currently happening and we expect more to be on the way. Anybody, if you've read the news, you, you understand that microprocessors and other chips needed to produce new vehicles are very scarce. They're having trouble getting those. There are a couple of plants that are currently shut down and there are probably others to come. We have had, as Commissioners of Revenue and our Professional Association communication with J.D. Power Associates that we rely on for our vehicle valuations. And they're suggesting to us that it may be fourth quarter of 2024 before new inventory levels return to pre-COVID levels. Taxpayers will probably see increased assessments, not only in '21, but then again in 2022. And what we're looking at right now for this year is the majority of the increases are occurring with larger pickups, SUVs, and specialty cars as opposed to civilians. So that should give you a general idea of what's happening in the market this year and how it will affect our citizens. Any questions I can help you with?
All right, any questions? Well, it sounds like we can blame COVID once again.
Yeah, just buckle up for another, another year, unfortunately. But we, we're happy to always answer questions that anyone has in our office or through the phone.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
I move that a resolution as proposed be adopted establishing the Personnel, Personal Property Tax Relief Act, the PPTRA, percentage at 32%.
We have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to second it.
All right, Counselor Claffey has second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Smith, please call the roll.
Ms. Dole.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, thank you. All right, the next item is item F, a consideration of a resolution authorizing refinancing of 2005, 2012, 2013, and 2019 bonds. Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor, Phil Trayer, the city's chief finance officer, will present this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenberg. Madam Mayor, members of councils, a pleasure to be here this evening. Tonight, we're here to consider a refinancing of our eligible tax-supported debt via the Virginia Resource Authority Fall Pool Offering. Savings estimates have been updated and are expected to produce an additional savings in nearly $60,000 above previously reported figures. Bonds to be considered, 2005 series, which was originally issued for 4.6 million, has a remaining balance of 1.2 million and estimated gross savings as a result of the refinancing of $40,000. The 2012 series, which was originally issued for 10 million, has a remaining balance of 4.7 million, estimated gross savings of between $178,000 and $208,000. The 2013 series, which was originally issued for 5 million, has remaining balance at 2.6 million with estimated gross savings of between $127,000 and $145,000. And finally, we have the 2019 series, which was originally issued for 14.7 million, remaining balance of 13.4 million, and estimated gross savings of between $246,000 and $387,000. Pricing dates for these bonds has been set for October 27th, 2021, and language has been included in the resolution to establish a net present value savings floor of 1% or nearly $250,000 to safeguard against unexpected increases in interest rates. All maturity rates of these bonds will remain as originally issued. A detailed presentation occurred at your August 26, 2021 work session, and the city manager recommends approval as presented. Back with us this evening is Mr. Ted Cole of Davenport Finance and Mr. Chris Cole of Hutton Andrews, who will assist with any questions that you may have.
Right, are there any questions?
Phil?
Yes, sir.
Just one point of clarification. On the 20, 2019 bond for SunTrust, you said the gross savings was between 211,000 and 387,000. It's listed here as 355.
Yeah, we, we have upped that just within the last day.
Perfect.
Yes.
And that was Vice Mayor Robertson. All right, are there any questions? No? Okay, in that case, I'll entertain a motion.
This is Carolyn Dole.
Counselor Dole.
I move to adopt the proposed resolution authorizing the issuance, sale, and approval of a general obligation refunding bond in a principal amount not to exceed 22,200,000 and refund all or portions of the previously issued 4,600,000 general obligation public improvement bond, Series 2005, which has an outstanding balance of 1,226,981. The $10,000 general obligation public improvement bond, Series 2012, which has an outstanding balance of 4,707,000. The $5,000 general obligation public improvement bond, Series 2013, which has an outstanding balance of 2,570,000. And the 14,660,000 general, 14,660,000 general obligation refunding bond, Series 2019B, which has an outstanding balance of 13,421,000, for the purpose of decreasing the cost of borrowed funds in accordance with the terms and parameters set forth in the resolution.
Okay, that's quite a mouthful. We have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Smith, please call the roll.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Dole.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, the next item is item G, a resolution of the Council of the City of Stanton authorizing the city manager to designate an acting clerk for the September 16, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor, this item arises on your agenda as a result of the absence of Rachel Zinni, Clerk of Council, who will be away when the planning commission meets next week. And so if council chooses to adopt the suggested motion, it will delegate to me the authority to identify and designate a, an individual to substitute for Ms. Zinni to act as clerk at the planning commission meeting or any, a, a meeting of any other board or commission that occurs during the week of September 13.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Rosenberg? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Counselor Darby?
I move that the council authorizes the city manager to serve as the acting clerk for the Stanton Planning Commission meeting on September 16, 2021, and to designate a clerk needed for any other city board or commission meeting for the week of September 13 through September 17, 2021.
All right, we have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Excuse me, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I apologize. If I could ask for Mr. Blair's input on this, as the motion was read, I, I noticed that it actually authorizes.
You.
Me. And the, the intention, I thought, was to authorize me to designate an individual to serve as clerk.
Okay, if that's your pleasure, we can change "serve" to "designate."
God, he caught that one. We were, I was hoping he was going to be.
Move that the council authorizes the city manager to designate an acting clerk for the Stanton Planning Commission meeting.
Counselor Darby, do you wish to amend your motion?
Yes, I will amend the motion. Do you want me to read it again?
You just say "as stated."
As stated, to designate as the act, an acting clerk for the Stanton Planning Commission meeting.
Will be our city manager, Steve Rosenberg. All right, we have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
I'll second it.
We have a second, any further discussion?
This is Carolyn Dole.
Counselor Dole.
I, I was a little disappointed. I thought that Mr. Rosenberg was going to serve, you know, under the, under the other duties as assigned part of everybody's job description.
I was hoping so.
That's on the record. All right.
I'm speechless.
Ms. Smith, please call the roll.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Dole.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, the next item is matters from the city manager.
Madam Mayor, I have two items which may be of particular interest to the public. I believe that we've communicated on both of these subjects to city council. First of all, beginning Saturday, there will be implemented a mask requirement at the Stanton Public Library for all patrons, I think it's five or older. And this, it comes as a result of the increase in local COVID cases and is consistent with guidance from both federal and state public health agencies. And so I know that the library has begun to publicize the change and it, at the, at the present time, it's specific to that particular city facility, doesn't apply to any other city facility. In other city facilities, the standard remains the same, that if you're unvaccinated, you are required to wear a mask. And if you are vaccinated, it is recommended that you wear a mask. So that change for the library only is effective on Saturday when the library opens for business. And the other item that I want to bring to the public's attention is a new phase of the Central Avenue Streetscape Project. Dominion Energy will begin undergrounding its utility lines on that corridor. And that work will begin on September 14, and it's expected to take two to three weeks. The work will be completed in phases. So there will be clo, complete closures of Central Avenue in certain locations as that work progresses. So to date, what has occurred is there's been maintained a single lane open in the southbound direction. But as this undergrounding work by Dominion Energy commences and southbound direction, but as this undergrounding work by Dominion Energy commences and continues, there will be portions of Central that are closed entirely. And that entire phase of the project will take somewhere between two and three weeks before that single lane, southbound, is completely restored. And then again, the project completion is not scheduled to occur until next summer, although at last report, the project was ahead of schedule. But so the important information is that beginning September 14, Dominion Energy will be closing sections of Central Avenue entirely over the course of a two- to three-week period. Thank you.
All right, thank you. The next item is roll call. I have something here to read, that our city attorney has requested that I read. This evening, we have a new addition to our regular meeting agenda identified as roll call. Council members agreed to this addition during our retreat earlier this month. Roll call affords each council member an opportunity to bring forth matters for staff follow-up either during the same meeting or a future meeting if additional time is required to respond to a council member inquiry. Now, the roll call for this meeting will be, obviously, on the regular agenda, but starting on September 23, which is our next meeting, the roll call will be under the work session agenda. With that, I will go down the line. Let's start with Councilor Doll. Do you have a question or a comment for Mr. Rosenberg?
My only question and comment is that I didn't recall, I don't recall agreeing to have this roll call because we had a discussion on it, but I think when a Stantonian asked me a question that I need to find out an answer to, I contact Mr. Rosenberg right away and have them working on that, and then get the answer back to the person. So it'll be pretty rare when I would ever have anything that I would wait this long to ask Mr. Rosenberg about. So, I mean, that's my comment about roll call.
All right. Councilor Mead. Councilor Mead.
Yeah, Mr. Rosenberg is aware of, because I've communicated with him, the many complaints that citizens have had about the recycling center. I think the, not this past Saturday, but the Saturday before, before that, the center was not open because the members of the community were parked, blocking the entrance to the recycling center. Another day was closed early, and I understand that it was a medical emergency because folks put un-rinced items into recycling bins that attract bees, and a member of our staff was stunned and had to be taken to the hospital. And all that is very understandable when you take it at an item at a time and an issue at a time, but when you combine all of them together over a 60-day period, it does seem that we are operating the recycling center more in fits than in starts. And so I just wanted to bring that forward as an issue that I have heard again and again from members of the community.
All right. Next is Councilor Darby.
The only thing that I wanted to bring up, and it was more just to get it on the record, I think there was a, I recall seeing an email from a citizen regarding questions about our ARPA funds and when that would be, you know, coming forward. And so can you all elaborate as to when we might get some staff recommendations as to what we will be looking at doing with that money?
Madam Mayor, I've asked Assistant City Manager Leslie Beauregard to address the question that's raised by Councilmember Darby.
Certainly.
Hey, thank you. Thanks for asking that, Ms. Darby. So staff, we're continuing to review the rules and guidelines associated with ARPA. And if you remember how the CARES funds went, they continue to change over time, so we just need to keep an eye on that over time. But there's no reason that we can't start to bring something before city council as soon as possible. So we're looking at one of the meetings in October to start to bring some preliminary recommendations on the ARPA funds and also a strategy for public engagement, which is really important when it comes to how we're going to spend these funds. Remember that we have time to spend this money. We have till the end of 2024 to actually disobligate the funds. So we have a chance, and this is very unusual, obviously, we won't get this chance again. So we have time to be visionary and think big about this. So we want to make sure that we take this in front of you often and frequently over the next several years. And so what we do in October will just be the beginning of the conversation, of course. So in speaking with Mr. Trayer, who's standing in the doorway, that is our plan right now. If something changes, we'll let you all know that our plan right now is one of the meetings in October to start the discussion about the ARPA money and about the public engagement piece as well.
Thank you.
Councilor Claffey.
Yes, I wanted to ask City Manager Steve Rosenberg to provide any possible updates concerning the Augusta County Courthouse. Many citizens are discussing this matter around town. Just wondering if you have anything we can share.
I don't have any information to share with you at this time, Mr. Claffey. I think that, you know, we're waiting in the same way that the public is waiting to see what steps may be next for the county.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Yeah. Mr. Rosenberg, I think, and I've communicated with you a little bit, I did have a citizen that reached out and sent pictures, and we've probably all seen them, about downtown, and he's quite dismayed. And I've even seen them, I thought the same thing, but, you know, every year, I mean, our hanging baskets downtown, which are just gorgeous, this year leaves a little bit to be desired. And then, of course, he also included pictures of Waynesburg's hanging baskets, which, you know, kind of look like ours did in the past, and he just was really, you know, wanted to know, like, can't we do something about that? But anyway, that was the question.
So I'm happy to address that briefly, Vice Mayor Robertson. I think as some of you are aware, the plantings downtown are actually handled by the Stanton Downtown Development Association. And we have, there's an agreement, of course, SDDA is funded primarily by the city, both in the form of tax revenue derived from a special tax district that encompasses the central business district, as well as an additional appropriation, I believe, in the amount of $50,000 annually by the city. And those funds are made available to SDDA, and there's a contract or an agreement between the city and SDDA that addresses the functions that SDDA will perform using those funds. And one of those functions or obligations is the landscaping or the baskets that you see downtown. And in prior years, it was very specifically referred to, the agreement specifically referred to hanging baskets. The new executive director, Greg Beam, asked for some modifications in this year's version of the agreement to allow them to pursue some alternatives. And he sought that change, one, because the contractor who had been handling that for SDDA previously was no longer available to handle that project, which is very intensive, you know, with nearly daily watering. And the other issue was that with the closures for shop and dine-out in downtown, it made it difficult to access in order to complete the watering as frequently as it needed to be completed. And so SDDA came forward with an alternative proposal that included hanging baskets similar to those that we all were familiar with previously at the intersections and then street-level plantings on the rest of the blocks. And the idea was that there would be businesses that would actually participate after the initial placement of the plantings. They would maintain them so that SDDA could save money. And at the same time, what he hoped to do was to engage downtown business owners in an SDDA initiative. So I spoke with Mr. Beam today in anticipation of your question, and, you know, I think he recognizes, we all recognize, the hanging baskets did not do well. There was a new designer, who they had for the project, and the plans that she specified for the hanging baskets did not do well. The street-level plantings flourished, and I have, I've received pictures this evening that I can forward to council, and you can see how those look. So, you know, we're all accustomed to looking up, but the street-level plantings met the goal and expectation of SDDA. And we're talking about sidewalk planters, you know, potted pots, you know, in front of storefronts, much more prevalent than in prior years. And so there were, and there were 14 businesses on Beverly Street that actively participated in those street-level plantings. And so, you know, what will happen now, we've come to the end of that season with Labor Day, and the SDDA Design Committee will regroup, they'll look at what their experience was last, you know, over the course of this past season, and they'll come forward with a proposal for their program next year. But I think that there's a recognition on Greg's part, on Mr. Beam's part, that there's room for improvement.
Yeah, okay.
And he did reply to Mr. Pritchett, who sent the email to council this afternoon, and copied all of you, all the members of council, so that you can see the nature of his response. But, you know, it's really consistent with what I've just shared with you. So I think that there were, you know, that they had reasons to do things differently than in the past. Some of what they chose to do differently worked really well. Some of what they chose to do differently didn't work very well. It's on their radar, and I think we can look forward to seeing, you know, some adjustments for next year.
Just, and on another point, I mean, our city horticulturists, the plantings down by the watering can and the plantings around the public library are unbelievable. They're gorgeous.
We're very fortunate to have Matt Sensabaugh.
Yeah, so, yeah, those are just amazing. So my kudos to Matt.
I'll pass that on. Thank you.
All right, I would just like to make a comment. If any of the council members or anyone within the city, any of our citizens have a question, by all means, please do contact City Hall Mr. Rosenberg, and he will be happy to answer your question immediately. If council members have a new question or they would like something placed in the minutes, roll call is for you. All right. Next item is matters from the public. Matters from the public. This part of city council's agenda is entitled Matters from the Public. It is the time that council sets aside to hear from citizens and others about a wide variety of subjects. Before we begin, I'd like to share five basic ground rules that we ask you to respect as you make your remarks. One, please come to the podium or begin your call, identify yourself, and complete your remarks within five minutes. I will let you know when you've reached your five minutes. We ask that you please give your name, your address, and then keep your remarks at five minutes or less. When you reach the five-minute time limit, I will let you know that your time has expired. If you continue to speak, I will ask you to step away from the podium or to end your call. If you continue to speak after I inform you that you have exceeded your time limit, I will again ask you to please stop speaking and step away from the podium or end your call. If you still continue to speak, I will ask the Clerk of Council to end your call, and if you continue to speak from the podium, you may be charged with disorderly conduct under Virginia Code Section 18.2-415A2. Two, this is a time for us as council simply to listen to your remarks. In an effort to encourage and to maintain orderly conduct, we will not engage in give-and-take debate. If you are seeking information, you may mention it during your remarks, and the city manager or his staff may get in touch with you in the days ahead. Three, we ask that you direct your comments to council as a whole and not to identify members of council or to an individual employee of the city. If you want to keep up, if you, excuse me, I'm sorry, if you want to take up an issue with an individual member of council or an employee, please speak with us before or after the meeting. We are also accessible by phone, mail, or email. Again, we ask that you direct your comments to the council as a whole. Four, we expect every speaker to be civil and courteous. Using profanity, making personal attacks on an individual unrelated to the performance of their official duties on behalf of the City of Stanton and doing anything that is disruptive to the orderly conduct of this meeting will not be tolerated. Five, finally, as the presiding officer, it is my duty to remind you that if you choose not to abide by these ground rules, I may find that you are out of order and will ask you to withdraw from the podium or to end your call. We certainly do not want to reach that point or even beyond, so we respectfully ask for your full cooperation in observing these guidelines. If you wish, you may obtain a copy of the ground rules from our acting clerk of council, Ms. Smith. And now we welcome all speakers. The podium is now available for matters from the public as well as remote participation using the Zoom platform. One would think I have that memorized by now.
Yes.
All right. All righty. With that, I will open it up to the folks in the audience. Welcome, Mr. Jennings.
My name is Bowen Jennings, 332 Charlotte Lane, Stanton. What I'm a little bit concerned about, actually, oh, maybe 25, 30 years ago, our entrance to the city was a four-by-four post with a license plate all saying Stanton, Virginia. And so anyway, I pushed the entrance, our entrance signs changed and upkeep, and we did real good there for a while. Now, I don't know what the story is, but you come in on Richmond Road, the City of Stanton sign is there, no flowers around, nothing to make it look attractive. And you go to, over to stores draft, our little community to southeast of here, you know, they got, their entrance signs looked real nice and everything, and I think we got to put some effort on our entrance signs and get flowers and whatever around them. A brother of me took one on over on Sears Hill. Of course, we're a couple roughnecks that came off of Sears Hill, and we had that one landscaped and everything down the corner Hampton Street and Greenville Avenue. And anyway, that one's, it's not maintained or kept up like it should be kept. And anyway, I think we got to get something going here, get these entrance signs, because the entrance into the city says a lot to it, first impression coming into the city. And what made me really aware, I went to the World's Fair out in Vancouver, Canada. These little towns going through Canada had tremendous upkeep on flowers and everything, like a lot of pride. But this, we got to get, put some effort into. We definitely dropped the ball on these entrance signs. So I suggest that we, whatever it takes to get them done, get them done. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Ms. Smith, does anyone have their hand raised?
I have no one with their hand raised.
Right. Anyone else in the audience?
Fossa.
Welcome back, Mr. Fossa.
Thank you. I've been here now, how many times? At least 15 times. That's quite a few. I have a problem, and it was my problem. But as I research the problem, it becomes more of a problem for the thousands of people that live here in Stanton. More, I'm not going to go into a lot of detail, but I want you to know that I did go up through the channels, through the channels to get this thing settled and squared away. Not one of you even took the time to investigate why I was picketing, except away. Not one of you even took the time to investigate why I was pickety, except one person said to me, "Don't pick it, please." And I said, "I can't do that." I persevere, I persist, and I never give up. I have patience. Okay? I've gone as far as going to the governor. I've written a letter to the governor. I'm sure some of you have seen the letter. I don't know. If you haven't, I have copies for you. I've written a list, this letter, went to the Attorney General, to the Justice Department, and to the National Association of Colored People. Let me just show you what I have. Nothing means anything until you put a number to it. I taught physics, and there were people that said, "Can't you teach physics without putting numbers? There's no way." If you ever had a course in physics, you know it's all about numbers. Okay, here are some pages that were given to me by the real estate development here, agency. Pages and pages of houses that were two hundred thousand or more. None of them received any increase in their assessments. Why? Then I have pages, yellow pages, where people, where some of these two hundred thousand instead, houses, instead of getting increases in assessment, got decreases of assessment for ten, for ten, twenty, thirty, forty thousand dollars and more. Why? At the same time, I have pages and pages of houses between fifty thousand and a hundred thousand. And just about the majority of them all had increases. All had increases. That means, that's telling you something, that those who have the money to pay for the increases are riding on the backs of people who can't afford it. You got, they got some money, so much money, two thousand dollars probably somewheres in that neighborhood. And within a short time, that was all wiped away by the real estate people. And the Real Estate Appealsment Board, at one instant there, there were twelve people or so that went before that board. Only three of them had any justice given to them. Why? I've been trying to get an, an, an audience with the Real Estate Appeals Board, and they won't give me that audience. I've met with Mr. Rosenberg and Mr. So-so, and the only thing I got was conversation. Well, conversation, you can only produce so much, so much knowledge, about twelve percent. Seeing and hearing and looking at things, it amounts to about forty-five percent. How do they justify comparing a single home, which is only thirteen feet away from the railroad, with two-story homes that are a half mile away? How can they have many, many houses in the back here? Look at them, with no assessment. This is what they gave me. They gave me. No increase in assessments. You're familiar with Rainbow Drive? They have some assessments on Rainbow Drive that are less than, that are a little bit more than what my house is worth. And my house was made from scrap lumber from the...
Mr. Fossa, your time is up.
Well, I can't, I can't explain everything to you.
Mr. Fossa, your time is up.
I need more time. And you should have given me more time. Last week, you could have done that.
Can you please step away?
I have something for you.
Thank you. Ms. Smith, is there anyone with their hand raised?
There is no one with their hand raised.
All right. With that, I call the meeting adjourned.